Thank you. Okay, I'd like to call the Mount Greylock Regional School District School Committee to order. It's Thursday, August 6th, 2020. It is 4:04 PM. Per Governor Baker's orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, MGLC 30A, Section 20, the public will not be allowed to physically access this school committee meeting. The public can access the meeting virtually through the Mount Greylock YouTube channel. At Mount Greylock Regional School District, our mission is to create a community of learners working together in a safe and challenging learning environment that encourages restorative-based processes, respect, inclusive diversity, courtesy, integrity, and responsibility through high expectations and cooperation resulting in lifelong learning and personal growth. The next item on our agenda is public comment. And we have received public comment in various ways because the public can't physically be here. So we have, I think, let me just quickly check our sign-in sheet. We have... Hold on one second. Too much technology in front of us. Uh, Rob, Jr.? Ally says the YouTube isn't working. I hope it is because I can't read that again. It's live?
Yep, I got it. Tell her to, um, go to YouTube.
Are you at the YouTube channel, Ally?
Yep.
So YouTube slash watch? Question mark, me?
Can you hear her?
Um, no, not entirely. But I have the link, I mean, I'm on the district page and have the link that was in the agenda.
So the link might be wrong.
I'm pulling up anything new.
I just texted the link to it to her.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, let me know and then...
Yeah, if you refresh, Ally, it should be there.
Okay, for that.
Yeah, let me...
For that.
Yeah, let me know.
Yep.
Yep, got it, thank you. Um, but it is, okay. I'm a little concerned it's not somehow linked to the main district page if it's not... Like, I'm refreshing and refreshing, it's not coming through, but Joe, your link worked, so I'm good.
I did, I did try the link that's on the agenda and it is there.
Under the home tab, it's the thing right up top. It says "Live Now."
Yeah, the Scavlums, I just got a, an email from the Scavlums that they were able to connect. So...
I'm able to watch it on my laptop.
Okay. So I have two emails to read and then, um, technically in the order they were received, I'm going to read this one. I will call the Scavlums and then I'll read the one that, um, I just received. Okay. Dear Rob and Christina, please share this email with the rest of the members of the school committee at your Thursday meeting. I am writing after having read that Smith College has decided not to return physically in the fall. I am appending the link at the end of this letter with hopes that you will convey the salient parts of the rest, to the rest of the committee. Having witnessed irresponsible behaviors of some Williams students after the outbreak of COVID-19, I have little faith that Williams will be able to control its students' private behaviors and the potential spread of the virus, even with the precaution of testing each student every week. And I note that they are at least testing. Are we prepared to exercise such measures to protect our children? What follows relates to Tuesday's, Tuesday morning Zoom meeting. I am concerned with what appeared to be a strenuous push by Stephen Miller to get children back into the classroom ASAP. When I, when I brought up the issue of inadequate ventilation systems at West and Last, Mr. Miller reasonably recognized that this should be investigated, but quickly returned to his desire for a speedy return to the physical classroom. If there was a theme to his participation, it was this agenda, this and his periodic reminders that he is a college math professor. Statistics may suggest that most children more easily survive the virus, but numbers and playing the odds are not an excuse to move forward if a single life may be lost or severely compromised. This is not a matter of math, it is a matter of humanity. At any rate, it has recently been proven that young children can carry extremely high levels of the virus in the upper respiratory system and thus can easily spread the disease to vulnerable teachers, staff, and family. We may think we are in a safe bubble, but even in the days since the aforementioned Zoom meeting, we are finding that there is significant uptick in Massachusetts cases, that rural areas are in danger, and that wise institutions like Smith are rescinding their decisions to return in the fall. Anyone venturing into Spring Street on the weekend can easily see that it is a significant influx of tourists in Williamstown. The parking lot of tourist motels filled with cars without a state license plates. Shop owners have reported to me numerous instances of individuals arriving without the rigorous precautions that initially helped Massachusetts lower the infection rate. Adolescents are congregating without masks or distancing. A viewing of Ibsen's "An Enemy of the People" or even Spielberg's Jaws seems in order as a reminder of what happens when people refuse to face unpleasant facts in their own safe havens. I heard a couple of parents complain that their children are bored, depressed, and eager to get back to school. It is not for kids to make this decision while we are, we are still there, hopefully more experienced, wiser guardians. To the contrary, I have heard others say that their children really miss the classrooms but are taking the adjustment in stride, as is my child. I do not believe that kids' minds are atrophying and that missing X number of days of physical classroom instruction is going to seriously impair their development, as long as better use is made of remote learning with teachers teaching full lessons on Zoom. Finland achieves superior results with a much, with much less time in the classroom. One teacher noted that using Zoom was going to seriously impair her style because she likes to move around the classroom. I would suggest she learn to sit still, which is asking far less of her than it would ask of students, especially younger ones, to wear masks for extended periods of time in what will, what will likely be of necessity a prison-like environment. To my statement that some parents are contemplating creating small learning pods to bolster remote learning, a high school English teacher implied that the action might smack of segregation and implication I find is tasteful. If parents do this, as is their prerogative, it would be done pragmatically with families who have mutual trust in each other's safety precautions and with children who can work well together. Trying to believe such efforts with inteminations of exclusivity will only make some consider more seriously the prospect of homeschooling until the crisis is over. Finally, it was suggested that parents who are not planning to have their children return physically to the classroom should inform the school soon in a new survey. One reason given for this was so that better planning could be made for determining distancing in classrooms. I am hoping this was not intended as casually as it may have come across. First, parents cannot make a decision until they are assured that such safety concerns as the ventilation problem have been addressed. Second, you should not be so ready to accept such potential losses. You should be doing everything possible to retain all residents who have done their part to support and build our three schools. I strongly advocate that you adopt a worst-case scenario approach. It is a moral approach. Anything less strikes me as dangerously optimistic, smacking of wishful, wish fulfillment, and in some cases even selfish. The worst-case scenario suggests that you prioritize development of the remote learning module. Here's a link to the Smith College news. I wish you the best in handling the difficult decision before you. Ralph Hammond. Okay, and I am going to call the Scavlums.
Can you hear this? Bit of a delay on the call.
Yes. So I have advised the Scavlums to turn off the YouTube when I reach out to them. Busy. Did they only hear one? Okay.
Hi Christina.
Hi, how are you?
Good, thanks. How are you doing?
Good. You are live. Al, can you hear?
Yes.
Great.
I'm trying, I muted and did everything else, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Hi, everybody, thanks. Now I'm talking to my phone. Anyway, thank you, I wanted to just read something that my wife and I, uh, we updated it since we wrote a letter to the school committee prior, and I would like to qualify this, that none of this is complaining. Dear school committee, we encourage the school committee to hold off in taking a vote regarding reopening plans for our schools, allowing for more time to consider all the options and seek greater community input to help solve some of the challenges we are facing to reopen our schools. Specifically, we encourage the school committee to further pursue as much in-person learning as possible for our children, consistent with the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education stated objectives, in quotes, "to safe return of as many students as possible to in-person school settings to maximize learning and address our students' holistic needs," end quote, as well as the director of the CDC's recent testimony that, in quotes, "it's important to realize that it's in the public health's best interest for K to 12 students to get back into face-to-face learning," end quote, and that otherwise there could be, in quotes, "significant public health consequences," end quote. Like us, many parents were caught off guard by the proposal to conduct the remote-only model for grades 10 through 12 versus including them in the hybrid model that is proposed for the balance of the grades. We feel strongly that the lack of any in-person learning poses a threat to our children, endangering adolescents in grades 10 through 12 by putting them at greater risk of suffering social, emotional, and physical health issues than if they were part of the hybrid model. While we understand the desire to maintain, in quotes, "the richness of opportunity," in quotes, "the breadth of the curriculum for students in 10 through 12," if it is necessary to adjust this, allowing students to be in person, we advocate that it's a far better outcome, mindful of the potential consequences. Adjusting the curriculum represents a one-year consequence versus the loss of social interaction for adolescents adversely affecting their mental well-being and emotional development that represents a lifetime consequence. Data is readily available on the WHO website concerning mental health in teenagers, especially ages 15 through 19 where suicide is the leading cause of death. We are already witnessing and personally experiencing depression and other behavioral challenges in our community. Adolescence is a unique and formative time, and studies show that reducing their opportunities for face-to-face, social contact outside their households can have detrimental mental health consequences for many years to come. Adolescents count more on their peers than other adult mentors such as teachers and coaches as they grow developmentally, becoming young adults versus younger teens who still rely more on their parents. There are a myriad of other social concerns for adolescents that become more pronounced absent the structure of an in-person school environment and the boredom and idleness that accompanies an at-home setting. These concerns range from drug and alcohol abuse to teen pregnancy. We can go on and encourage you to further consult with healthcare professionals in our community, many of whom also happen to be parents. We are very, very fortunate to live where we do and in a highly responsible community. The present facts and figures surrounding the virus in our region are testament to this. Yes, we need to be prepared for the potential of a change in our situation, but let's please not ignore the opportunity we have right now to afford all of our children at least some in-person learning that enables them to meet their teachers in person and to reestablish relationships among classmates and past teachers and staff. This will only help to make the remote learning portion of the model more effective and improve its chance for success, should we have to go full remote at some point. It will help establish a greater sense of responsibility for both the students and the teachers that comes with being face-to-face or mask-to-mask, as the case may be. How much better can it get concerning the numbers? There are presently no cases in Northern Berkshire County and have not been for a while. In fact, mindful of this, the sooner we can get our kids back in school in person, the better while the going is good and the seasons are conducive to being outdoors and having windows open, et cetera. We should not delay. Our district, located here in the northwest corner of Massachusetts, has the opportunity to lead by example and demonstrate how the in-person model can work. We owe it to our children to try. Thank you very much for the time and thoughtful consideration you are devoting to the well for our kids. John and Wendy Scavlin, parents of John, arising senior, Jane, arising sophomore, 27 Bingham Street, Blainstow.
Thank you, John.
Yep, thanks Christina, thanks everybody.
Bye. Okay, we have one more, uh, public comment that I will read. Dear members of the school committee, thank you for the incredible amount of work you are doing to prepare for the start of school during this complicated time. I attended the education subcommittee meeting on Tuesday morning and was happy to hear Steve Miller push for getting 10th through 12th graders in the building for two days each week. As parents of a rising sophomore, a rising eighth grader, and a rising fifth grader, we hope that all three of our children will benefit from some in-person instruction this fall. We are concerned about the mental health of our children and our 15-year-old has expressed feeling forgotten and hurt by the preliminary reopening proposal. It is she who has voiced most frequently the desire to be back in school among her peers, teachers, and coaches. John and Wendy Scavlin shared their email to the school committee with us, and we agree that we are very fortunate to live where we do and in a highly responsible community. The present facts and figures surrounding the virus in our region are a testament to this. Yes, we need to prepare for the potential of a change in our situation, but let's please not ignore the opportunity we have right now to afford all of our children at least some in-person learning that enables them to meet their teachers in person and to reestablish relationships among classmates and past teachers and staff. This will only help make the remote learning portion of the model more effective and improve its chance for success, should we have to go full remote at some point. It will help establish a greater sense of responsibility for both the students and the teachers that comes with being face-to-face. Thank you for working to get all of our children in person, learning at least two days a week. Thank you Kathleen and Jonathan Ego of Williamstown. Okay. So that ends our public comment, and I want to thank everyone for contributing and understanding we're still sort of working out the kinks of meeting in person-ish. Okay, so the next item on our agenda is the approval of minutes. Typically, we have fewer minutes to approve, but we have quite a few here. I am going to make a motion to approve all of the minutes on here and then we can talk about, um, if we need to go back and amend any of them. So, um, do I have a motion to approve the following minutes? July 6th, July 9th, July 13th, July 17th, July 24th, July 29th, July 30th, July 31st, and July 31st at 2:30 PM?
I will so move.
Miller moves, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Taranova seconds, discussion. Do we need to make any changes on any of those meeting minutes?
There's a few commas I noticed that are not worth bringing up.
Okay.
There are a few misstatements that I think could be corrected, but I can email those to Jonathan or whoever.
I can't believe I went to all those meetings.
I can't believe I took all those minutes.
I can't believe you took all those minutes and I read them.
Are they all yours? Sorry, I'll email you.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Ally? Are you there, Ally?
Yep, Carter, aye.
Okay, thank you.
So nice not to do world call alphabetical.
Yeah. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the superintendent update, so I pass this over to Rob, who can now breathe through his mask.
Thank you. Uh, this, uh, I would like to start by thanking Carolyn Blanette Dufour, who helped us set up a scenario that helped the school committee understand what it's going to be like for students in the fall. This in-person meeting illustrates the challenges we face in the coming year. And, uh, for example, uh, right now, my glasses fog up every time I so open my mouth, and I have yet to figure out how to change that. But it also brings up some other things. We're just right now experiencing what it's like to have masks on and speak in a room that is about the size of a classroom. And while I have done, spent my life public speaking and have developed a bullhorn for a voice, not everybody does, and certainly children don't. So there's going to be after changes in people's behavior, the children's behavior and the adults' behavior, in order to make this sort of thing successful. Another example is the issues we have with interacting. We have two Polycom telephones, which are fairly expensive, but those are the, going to be the thing that we're going to need to do to be able to have students who are not in the classroom, whose families have opted to be out of the classroom, at least be able to hear what's going on. There's a great deal of, a great deal of technical issues that we have to, are going to have to work out. Another thing that, for those people who did not see it, because, well, we didn't film it, uh, all of the school committee members in the room were picked up by a bus today, a big yellow bus. And they, as they entered the bus, they carefully sanitized their hands with a dispenser, which is what all students are going to be doing. They sat in the assigned spots of their, not assigned spots, but the spots marked out to ensure that the buses, that there was social distancing on a bus, uh, that was, and we were following the state guidance on this, the Department of Education guidance. And, uh, so, and then we got off the bus in the same fashion that students will be asked to, and stood in line six feet apart from each other, and then waited till everybody was assembled before we entered the building. And then we entered the building and once again sanitized our hands and walked six feet apart to this classroom. So there was, it's a very interesting thing that I, having experienced this, Mr. Miller and I were discussing, is the state guidance really that, the right guidance in regard to getting on a bus? I'm sure that most of this guidance, actually not sure. I'm going to suggest that we are going to have to field test all of the guidance, because it's easy to write a plan, it's not until you execute that plan that you start to understand what's effective and what's not effective. And as the chair was saying, uh, this mask makes it very difficult for you to hear me, and my breathing is occluded by this mask, and I need to find a different one that allows a little more oxygen to get in so that I'm not suffocating myself with every breath. But these are the types of things that we're looking, that we're going to have to deal with. Now, this evening's presentation represents, represents the administration's latest thinking about reopening. In many respects, it's, it's different from the July 31st presentation because it's based on feedback from the school committee, from working groups and community input. I'm happy to say that the commissioner, today, in an online, uh, meeting with all of the superintendents, extended the deadline for submission of the final plans to August 14th, next Friday, giving us more time for public input and the direction from the school committee. I am requesting that the school committee delay a vote of this plan until Thursday, August 13th, so that there's more time for them to consider the plan and more opportunity for, for the public to become familiar with the elements of the plan. It is my intention to do a public presentation on Tuesday, August 11th, although I have not yet scheduled it, so that members of the public can hear what is being, uh, what is being, going to be proposed to the school committee prior to the school committee's vote on Thursday. These are extraordinary times, and the success of any plan requires the support of the community. And I'd like to take this opportunity to quote Benjamin Disraeli, that famous parliamentarian of 19th century England, who said, "The more extensive a person's knowledge of what has to be done, the greater will be that person's power of knowing what to do." So with that, I shall begin. That's an interesting thing. I just touched my tongue so I could turn a page. And I think, I, I should probably disinfect myself at the moment, but I'm not going to. But these are the issues that kids are going to have to face. So, I go back to this that I've been, uh, bringing up over and over again. The commissioner has emphasized a safer turn. That being said, there is no way to eliminate all risk. The Massachusetts Association of School superintendents has been working with the Parabola Project, a team of public health made up of the Harvard Public Health Group, Ariadne Labs, Brigham Women's Learning Accelerator, One Foundation. They recommend that we think about the return to school using a global view of risk, balancing the risks of COVID-19 associated within school learning with a significant risk to the overall health and well-being of students when they are out of school. At the center of this graphic is the COVID-19 risk, a risk that is not yet well-understood and, uh, something that is constantly evolving. Against that risk, we must consider the loss of learning. Students who could not return in the fall are already behind due to the lack of in-person dedication, education that happened in, uh, the fall, in the spring. The nutritional insecurity, some students depend on free reduced lunch meals provided in schools. The loss of parental employment, parents may be unable to work if they can't find childcare options to replace. The lack of access to essential services across the US, about 1.5 million children have a diagnosed speech impairment, and approximately one in five, 54 children have been diagnosed with autism, spectrum disorders. And these are best handled here in the school. Reduced detection of child abuse, social, emotional impact. So, there is risk if we bring students to school. There is risk if we don't bring children into school. The task of the district is, is to establish protocols and procedures to reduce possible exposure to COVID-19 so that we can address the risks of students, um, not being in school. Let me just switch here. Okay. So, what, in this, in this plan that I sent out to all of you, and, uh, Mr. Taranova, I will not read it verbatim this time, with a, uh, I'll be secure in the knowledge that you have read and earmarked every last page with careful consideration, uh, even though I only got it to you at about 11 o'clock today. So, what I like to start with is we have prerequisites for, uh, for in-person learning. These are the things we've been putting in place to make sure that, excuse me, excuse me, I got those little papers I gotta figure out. Okay. Need desks up here.
I'll come up and help that I have some.
Yeah, oh, here it is. I got it right here. Okay. So what's happened is, in the plan that you've got, uh, we've, the staff, the administration has established prerequisites for getting our students into school. So first off, we have been working to facilitate stable, limited-size groups of people whenever possible. For example, for the entry and exit, we've collaborated with our fire and police departments to enable the use of doors, hallways, and staircases so that individual classes, grades or wings have dedicated entry and exit paths. We have ensured that hallways will be either one-way or used with separate lanes for more distance traffic flow. And we are developing spacing and assigned seating plans for busing along with upgraded cleaning and sanitizing program, protocols. Then for all of the spaces we use, we've developed six-foot spacing of desks in classrooms, eliminated nonessential furniture, acquiring tents that will maximize outdoor open-air time, and we've purchased specialized Lexan dividers for one-on-one staff and student environments so that, uh, both people have a physical divider while being able to work one-on-one closely. Across all activities with the school, we're developing new ways to employ our facilities to keep ground stable. Lunches will be delivered in the classroom instead of lunch being served in the common spaces, specials will be held in the classroom, classroom hallways, staircases, and doors will be used by the smallest and most stable number of people possible. We are eliminating shared classroom materials and supplies. Then we're also facilitating, facilitating mask-wearing and other personal protection. We have acquired large volumes in numerous types of masks, respirators, and face shields for a variety of situations. We have purchased gowns and gloves for staff interacting with students in the need of close interaction. We facilitated hand washing by purchasing, uh, touchless foaming soap dispensers to maximize sanitary use of the bathroom, and we've acquired additional pedestal sanitizer dispensers to augment those already in the building. And we'll be focusing on air handling and surface cleaning. We've maximized our use of HEPA filtration. We're employing outside services to maximize the performance of our HVAC system. In our dedicated COVID triage rooms, we are deploying dedicated HEPA air filtration units. We are evaluating and servicing all windows so that they can open as much as possible. We are ensuring that hallway and door sanitizing will happen on a tighter schedule, and we verified the safety and COVID-19 FXC for all of the cleaning products, along with upgrading some of our tools. So that's what we've been doing to try, to ensure that we're, we're trying to consider everything that has been considered by the CDC, by the Department of Education, all the guidance, we are well on our way to making sure that these things are in place. We are well on our way to making sure that these things are in place. So, we also have the health group that has been working on these things. By the way, for those of you out there in YouTube land, you could open a separate window on your computer, and if you go to the Mount Graylock Regional School District, District site, and look for the 2020 reopening, you can review the documents that were prepared by the wellness group, the facilities group, and the instruction group. And those are the two, three groups that are heavily involved, although the others are as well, but I just haven't gotten those reports up there yet. So, the next part we're looking at here is prerequisites for in-person learning from the idea of, of the wellness perspective. And the group has come up with all sorts of recommendations that you can read online for mental health, preventing the spread of infection, instituting limiting, limited contact procedures, personal protective equipment, possible COVID case in a school, training and transportation. There is guidance for all of those that we're using for the development of our plan, and all of these guidance are the things that have derived right from the CDC and from the guidance. In other words, we are taking all of the professional step, all the professional guidance that's provided by scientists and departments of health to ensure that we, the things that we are planning are going to be, are basically based on, the considerations are taken there. That didn't go very well. So, the criteria for opening schools. I don't have this yet. There, and what I mean by this is the criteria of the metrics for the infection rates of COVID-19. One of the things that we, we, the commissioner has promised that we'll have metrics on infection rate next week. And that way, I'll be able to fill this out and put this in. Thanks to our wonderful business administrator and our health group, there has been some consideration of, what are the criteria for closing in person? And of course, this will be modified if it's different from the ideas that are, that we get from the Department of Education and the CDC. So for example, level one, if there is one confirmed case within a cohort, that cohort will immediately move to remote learning until the cohort has no further confirmed cases for a period of two consecutive weeks. Cohort is defined as the largest group that shares a bathroom, classroom, hallway, or stairway. Level two is if there are X number of concurrent cases with a single school building that span multiple cohorts, that building will move to remote learning until the building's occupants have no further confirmed cases. Level three, if there are X number of confirmed cases in Lanesboro and Williamstown, the entire district will move to remote learning until the number of new confirmed cases per week drops below the number that we have hoped to get from the Department of Education for two consecutive weeks. Level four, if Berkshire County infection rate is greater than a certain percentage, the district will move to remote learning. Level five, if the state requests that the school districts move to remote learning, the district will move to remote learning until the state lifts the request. So I think that this is, I want to get, Joe, was that, was, was this more than you that was putting this together, or was this your?
The wellness group is currently building a much more detailed view of this, and so this is not, it's not a final proposal at all, but.
But it's the work, and that is the important part here. Now, I know that there has been all sorts of, the issues that I face all the time are that with the changing nature of our guidance that we receive and my desire to be communicative about what the district is doing, I inevitably say something that's, I say something that one day seemed to be right and the following day is not. So basically, this is where I stand right now, and if I receive new guidance or contravening information, then I would have to change that. But this is based on my training as an academic, that all knowledge is contingent on the status of the, of the information and data one has at any particular time. So this is the best I got at this particular time. So, before I go into the description of the model, supporting high-need students is also always at the forefront. Students who fall into any of the categories indicated in the question will receive in-school and full-day instruction and services consistent with their needs until the preliminary plan being described here means in conform with their IEPs, in particular specialized instruction and related services, their five or four accommodation plans, their need for support in developing or sustaining English language fluency, and other indicators of special need. Oh, I didn't go to that one. Sorry about that. But that is essentially, before I go into describing any plan, this is what, this is the important part for everyone to understand. And it's interesting how this was illustrated by our situation this evening. The idea of being able to have students basically access things that are happening in a classroom is a technical challenge that is going to require time, effort, and money in order to address. And the other thing I should have said at the very preface, as I begin prefacing this, all of these plans are subject to negotiation. And I'm actually going into meetings, I, the Magia and I have agreed to start talking about a plan because we figured it was best to wait until I had a proposal that we could talk about rather than talking about what I was thinking about doing. So now, on Tuesday, we intend to have a meeting, and it'll be the first of many as we work, work through all the issues about how this, how about the plan that I am devising, how that affects the contract language that we have got. So, that was our special needs that I was describing. Let's go to the next one. Technology prerequisites for the hybrid and remote models. We have to unify the platforms, which I've said before. The pre-K through 1 will be using ClassDojo, 2nd through 6, Google Classroom, 7 through 12 Canvas. We have to ensure that teachers and parents have the appropriate equipment, both in classrooms and remotely, to effectively deliver instruction. We have to ensure students have Chromebooks and sufficient internet access to receive instruction, create an online center hub with resources and training videos that teachers will have access to during hybrid remote learning, and provide training to ensure that everybody can do this. Now, the key part of this is the complexity of doing this for the variety of audiences that we're going to have. There are parents who are going to choose not to send their child to school at all. There are others who are going to send their children to school. And the work that we do, and this is no simple task, is how do you, how do you both teach with distance learning, given the tech, basically given the technology issues that we currently have? I mean, there, the cost of setting up something that's similar to this room per classroom. Just right now, we're being able to pull this off with two Polycom, special wiring, but we've got all sorts of microphones and things around there. This is not going to be an easy task and is going to require amount of time to figure out how to do this, as well as funds. But that's, those are the challenges that we're facing. But I posit that remote learning must be the focal point for our plan because of the conditions that might force us into remote learning at some time in the future. And I also say that the remote learning is, that our hybrid model is only going to be as good as the remote portion of the model as well. Okay. Let's, there we go. Let's get down to it. So I'm going to start with the hybrid model because that's the one I've proposed. I'm going to spend less amount of time on the in-person and the remote because, at this point, this is the one that I'm proposing. And the commissioner said that, that this plan that he wants submitted on the 14th of August must address all three learning plans, but be, must be the most detailed for the plan you intend to begin. So, this recommendation has been organized into three frameworks to support teaching and learning in grades pre-K through 6, 7 through 9, and 10 through 12. Remote learning would be planned with an eye toward limiting screen time for students to the extent possible. In a hybrid model, there would be students who attend school each day for the entire session. These students include those who require specialized instruction models and services along those with identified needs. During the first weeks of school, there will be a focus at all grade levels of developing relationships and establishing classroom norms that would facilitate remote learning. Okay. Let me just go on to this. So this is the, that's the general overview of it, so let's get down to it. The hybrid pre-K through 6. Now, this model has altered from what I said about it last week. Let me just grab my notes on this. So, on this particular model, children would attend school four days a week for half-day sessions in A/B groups, half the classroom per session created by administration with family groups and quarantining pods taken into consideration. Class cohorts would stay together throughout their time in the building without intermingling with other cohorts. In-person instruction would focus on core academic subjects. Days time out of the building, including Wednesday, would be designated for remote instruction with specialists, extended core subject work, and project-based learning. Scheduled remote office hours and support pairs would be staffed by the school personnel to check in and assist students who are working remotely with us completing their assignments. So, if I could clear that, in-person, four days a week. So, Group A, for example, would be attending Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday from the morning session. Group B would be attending the afternoon session, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. That's different than what I said last week when they were, basically they were going to be two full days, one group and two full days. The advantages of this is that the children have a more consistent interaction with the, with their teachers and with their peers, and, because the other group would have had essentially, basically four, four or five days where they were doing remote, whereas this has them being remote for different portions of four days. I think, I think I've got that fairly clear. The next part, let me just make sure, yep. Hybrid for 7 through 9. They would attend school in-person two full days a week in half-cohort groupings on a 2-1-2. In other words, the kids would be grouped into two groups, and some would go Monday and Tuesday, and then work remotely, and then the others would go Thursday and Friday. Wednesday, deep cleaning the building with collaboration professional development time for staff. Cohorts would be developed alphabetically based on family groups and in consideration of a family-developed pods. 7, 9. Teachers would refine the curriculum and instruction in consideration of the two in-person days devoted to intensive hands-on experiences in providing instructional guidance. 7th and 8th grades would have classes on the third floor, 9th would be housed on the second floor. To the extent possible, students would be grouped in cohorts of 10 to 15 students that stay together throughout the day in specific set of classrooms to limit co-mingling with cohorts. 7, 9, also full, non-rotating schedule inclusive of all seven periods would be established to provide a robust selection of courses and ease the pivot from hybrid to remote instruction and learning approaches. It will also be conceivable that a five-period schedule focused on core subject could be devised for the cohorts in 7 and 9. To enhance safety, wellness class sections would take place in person so that we could make sure that these 7 through 9 students are having a class in wellness. Lunch would be in a classroom with one's assigned cohort of peers. This would not sub, this would not change. Days out of school, including Wednesday, would be designated for remote instruction, including extended work and project-based learning. I think that kind of explains that one. Let's go to 10 through 12. As the, as the public comments have indicated here and other times, there was a, what would I call it? There was dismay at the idea that, of what I presented back on the 29th, or whenever I presented it. So now, these students would also attend school in-person two days per week. Half a grade would attend at a time, and their classes would be held in 18 classrooms on the first floor plus two science labs in the resource rooms on the second floor. A full, non-rotating schedule inclusive of all seven periods would be established to ease the pivot from hybrid to remote or in-person learning approaches and best maintain the integrity of the rigorous, diverse high school course of study. Lunch would be in the classrooms with a signed cohort of peers. That doesn't change. The three remote days would include experiential learning, project-based learning, as well as computer-based instruction using Mount Graylock's learning management system, Canvas. Remote learning piece of the hybrid model would be asynchronous with opportunities for remote office hours and support beyond. So, would you like me to stop there and let's discuss this hybrid model?
Yes.
I've been talking a lot, and I'm about to pass out for lack of oxygen. I've got to figure out some way of getting a mask that allows me to get a little more air in here. Oxygen, that is.
I hear running masks are the key.
Running masks? I've got to get that.
It actually might not be a good idea to buy a bunch of masks and give some to teachers or other people to just try out and get a sense of which do you feel more comfortable with, or encourage people to be put on.
I appreciate that suggestion because that is the interesting thing that I, I find here, is that you never know how something's going to work until you do it.
Did you have a question, Karen?
Sure. So, thank you. This, you went through them pretty quickly, but I think getting 10 through 12 into the school is going to be huge. And I'm wondering, going back to the pre-K through 6, the, the morning-afternoon model, I know that there are downsides to that in terms of turnover time for cleaning and the transportation costs and additional bus routes. Have those all been worked out? And I'm also wondering, you mentioned that at the, at Mount Graylock, the, the rooms all need to be outfitted. Because it's a relatively new building, we know what's in every classroom, and it's all, I think, relatively uniform. So I'm thinking that it is perhaps easier to cost out what kind of technology budget we're looking at for this, and so I'm wondering if that's all within the COVID technology 360,000 we've been talking about, or if that hasn't been cost out yet. So those are my two questions.
We don't have detailed cost estimates yet as to what will be required in order to convert every one of our classrooms into a hybrid-capable classroom. That's something where we are trying to figure out what that 80% type solution is that, that serves us well enough but does not cost $3,000 to $4,000 per classroom, which is more the ballpark for a really wonderful, high-end type system. So that's something that we're trying to refine right now.
Okay. Thank you. And the A/B model of the pre-K through 6, do we have an estimate in terms of the cost of extra bus routes, or, no? So that's all down the line. We shouldn't be thinking in terms of numbers. We should just be thinking in terms of.
Thank you. I think the fact, this is, this is our best thinking on how to do this.
Okay.
And my, my general thought is, let's, let's, as with negotiating this with the associations, I think the idea, we have to start with an idea of what, what do we think is the best that we can start the year offering this community? And then figure out how to do it, or, and.
And what it's going to cost.
Because in negotiations and in cost determinations, that's going to change how people conceive of this whole thing. I mean, that, that's, that's the way to.
I just want, I want to pick up on our transportation. I know we talked about that before, and we talked about whether or not the state would reimburse us for more rural transportation if our transportation costs go up. And I guess there's been no decision by the state because that would determine a lot what we do. If they say they're going to give us more money, it makes our transportation decision a lot easier than if we say no, we have to bike the bus for X amount of dollars.
I'm in complete agreement, and I think that's going to be the real issue that we have to figure out. On the commissioner's conference line today, there's, he said that, you know, transportation, there was a question was asked by one of the superintendents, is are we going to get more, more transportation money? And the decisions have not yet been made. There are questions that, that he's, as all of us, we are in such a state of, of not knowing that it's going to take a lot of time to figure out, to work through all of these issues.
I want to say that I like the idea that you're, and we are, under the impression that, that everything is flexible, and what might be happening on September 20th might not be what's happening on October 20th. And I like the fact that, and everyone should know that, and everyone should know that, that the real people to kind of make this work is not us, but the students. If students refuse to wear masks from going from class to class, if they refuse to do the, well, you know, I don't know, but they're, but they're the key. Not, we aren't the key, they are the key.
I was just, I was impressed by that fact today. I drove, actually, I drove to the Dufour Bus Company so that I could get there at the start and get on the bus. And as I did, I stopped at a little coffee shop thinking to myself, oh, let me get a cup of coffee because it's. a cup of coffee, because it's, and as I drove down Spring Street, I was looking at people, and I thought, I, I, with a fairly good, I'm pretty good at numbers, I swear that at least fifty percent of the people were not wearing masks walking down the street. And I am in complete agreement with your observation. This is a, the responsibility is a communal response. And what we have to do, we have opportunities. I was just thinking about this with the delay that the commissioner has given us, the idea that rather than having a September first start date, we're going to have a September sixteenth. And I thought, what a great idea if our families, our communities, and our staff said, I'm going to, I'm going to self-quarantine for, for two weeks. That, that's, these are the sort of, that's not easy. It's asking a great deal, but the point is that you've just made, we can't do this unless everybody participates. If everybody needs to think of themselves as, needs to understand their actions in relation, in relation to the, to the health of the community. And we're going to have to, part of the work that we're going to be doing, for example, that seven through nine wellness class, is helping kids understand that, how do you, how do you keep yourself healthy? And, go ahead, Joe.
We just had a special delivery of another mask that you might want to try, so I'm going to go and grab it, and then.
I'm dying with this thing. My wife purchased.
Not literally.
What? My wife just purchased, she's like, remember the old Nichols Pharmacy in Pittsfield? There's, it's now a fabric shop, and the people who sell it, I'll tell you.
If you want to position it so that, yeah, so that way.
That is much better. Thank you, Joe. Ah, I don't feel oxygen deprived anymore. Well, this is much, it doesn't like, this, this is actually the same stuff I think they use in curtains. And it's, I don't know, yeah. Sorry, yes?
So, the changes that you've made really do reflect very nicely a lot of the feedback that we've gotten from the community, so thank you for that. Are we going to survey the parents, the families again, to see based on this plan?
Yeah, that's, that's precisely what, what we want to do. The survey we sent out in mid-July really didn't give people much to say, other than, well, I might, might not. Now, we're in a position to say, this is what we're going to do. Given this, will you send your child to school? The last one was, if you recall, that survey was, yes, maybe no. And now we're going to make a forced choice. Give me a yes or a no. Send the kids, and then we're going to, yes or no? Are you going to send, is your child going to ride the bus? Because we need to figure all this out. It's going to, it's going to figure into this.
When you say yes or no on the bus, it's going to be, I think, a little bit more than that, so if there's a seat available, will your child take it? Does your child need a seat? Can your child carpool if we need them to carpool? Right?
What I would love to do, I want to take advantage of the, of the expertise that Williams College offers us. And if there is somebody, if there, I'd be happy to work with anybody that is an expert in surveys.
I know, I know people who are, and I'm happy to volunteer them.
Thank you. Volunteer them?
Yes.
Because that's, that's such a difficult aspect, is putting, in, in my doctoral dissertation, I, I, part of it was, I used, anyhow, part of it was based on survey.
One of those are former school committee members, so.
And I went on to this, basically, it was, I went to the psych department to help me organize the thing. They would, the psych department was actually the best in those days of statistical work. Any other questions?
So I, I know I sound like a broken record, but it's worth, you know, thanking you, the administration, and everybody else who's been working so hard and so tirelessly on this, and just reminding the community that this is an evolving process. And it is worth pausing and breathing, you were being taught about, you know, deep breathing right now, and reflecting where we are now and what is being proposed now with what was being considered a week ago, two weeks ago, a month ago. And it's incredible to see how responsive this has been to the concerns and the issues raised by the community. And we have gone from ten through twelve being there zero days a week, we moved up to one day a week, and then we moved from one day to two days a week. And so, you know, to everybody who is watching live or listening later, you know, please, you know, you know, write in, you know, call us with your concerns, with your issues, what things work, what things concern you, so that we can think about this. As you remarked, you know, riding the bus was, you know, a really good experience today and just going through, and there are some opportunities for some more efficiencies. And we're going to find that as we go through this, that these plans will continue. So, one of the things I wanted to bring up was, at the education subcommittee meeting, there was a lot of discussion about the HVAC. And did you want to say a little bit more about that? I know that was in some of the documents we had, but just so that the community can hear.
Would you like me to speak?
Please, if you would, you're the expert on it.
Some notes on that. Well, I'm not the expert, but I, I'm able to relay expert opinions, I hope. So, at Mount Greylock, we have a system that is, for all intents and purposes, brand-new. It has a lot of HEPA filtration options throughout, and the district has been maximizing its use of those possibilities already. At the two elementary schools, one of the, the silver linings in clearing out the buildings in March was that our facilities team went in with consultants, and they were able to optimize those systems, especially at West, in places where, like, the, the third-grade corridor upstairs, that had traditionally not functioned as well as people would like. A lot of attention was given to those systems, and the facilities team is reporting that right now they're functioning significantly better than they ever have. So I think that's something that, that, that is promising. But at the same time, given everything that's been happening this summer, the district did reach out to a specialist in HVAC engineering and systems, Jamrog, which is a company that we have coming on site now. They are measuring air volume turnover per hour, fine-tuning our building management systems in coordination with our team, and delivering options that we can, that we can look into for additional capital improvements, if that's something that we want to go forward with. We're also trying to make sure that they're going to give us input as to what is really going to make a difference versus what just sounds nice but won't really change air quality, which I think is important, given all the other expenses that we're going to be incurring to, to try to open. Along with that, we, we have taken, I mean, the, a big part of the guidance from the CDC is make sure you have windows open and free air coming into the building as much as you possibly can. In this climate, we are challenged throughout the wintertime, but a part of what we're looking at is how many of these windows can we open? And what are projected energy costs if we're running, and, and also just taxing the system if we're running them and trying to make sure we've got as much free air coming into the building for as many months of the year as possible. So those are all, I mean, those are some of the steps that we're taking to look at the HVAC question. And I feel like the, the team internally has done a great job, and we're calling on all the resources that we can.
No, thank you, because that was a concern that was expressed by many people, and it's, it's not the first time it's been expressed, and it's great to hear the progress that's being made on that, and want to make sure that news gets out. I had a couple of other questions as well. Are there going to be, I don't know if this is appropriate for the district, any efforts to help with childcare for parents? Any attempt to use resources, like a Williamstown Youth Center or other buildings?
I, I had some preliminary discussions about two weeks ago, but I haven't gone further from there. So I'm, I'm going to see what, what sort of things there are possible. Again, I think the communities, there are many resources within both communities. And it's just a question of, I think, once we've got a plan in place, then we're in a position to actually start saying, okay, I, I need morning coverage, or I need afternoon coverage, and things of that sort. I think, basically, coming up with a plan was, was the first thing so that we could discuss, you know, basically, start from there.
Right. And, and some people, if you now know that you will have your kids in school in the morning, you can adjust work for some people. Not everyone, but. Another one was comments about tents or Sweet Brook for additional space?
I, I, I've been, yeah, Tim Sears was going over to Sweet Brook. He has yet, we have yet to talk about that today. But I, I, I look at that, there are a number of issues that we face. One of them being is that in order for us to provide internet access, it has to be within a secure internet environment. And my colleague.
Yes.
Pay no attention to the man behind the curtain. My colleague in the booth over there, we've briefly discussed the challenges of bringing another building into our domain, which is absolutely required to ensure security for students. But right now, the plan that's been organized, we can do it in the, in our buildings. By the way, I also did want to say this. Our instructional group is, is deeply concerned, people have been working about this, about developing the skills necessary to go remote. And there are so many issues in order to do this well, that they have been, they have been discussing with me the idea that, and they make no bones about it, they, they actually believe we should start remote. Because of their estimation of the amount of work and time it's going to take to figure out how to do it well. And at the same time, they have expressed the concern about the school year, the calendar. Because as one of the letters mentioned, we might have a small window before flu season, and that's an important part. So I, I just want to say that, that there's a great tension to, about how to do this. And I think that the, the closers of school, the closure of school, the wellness group that we had looked at before, I think that this concept has got to be very carefully calibrated. Because, because we wouldn't want anything to happen to any students, our staff, or parents, or anybody. And so we've got to be able to act swiftly to changes in, to any changes in infection rates. I'm, I'm continually pleased by the, I'm pleased, and I live in Berkshire, and that I live in a place that has really a low incidence. I live in the little town of Alford, and we are the oldest per capita town, basically, we have the oldest average age in all of Massachusetts. The average age in my town is, I think, sixty-three or something of that sort. And not a single case, though, I believe, but we've never had a case. And, and we actually have a lot of people who live there who come from New York, actually, live in New York City as well. So I'm very pleased with this, but I'm also cognizant of the fact that it can spread like wildfire, that one case could go, could just get right out of hand very, very quickly. And we're putting, basically, in these plans, at the facilities and the wellness group, we're putting everything we can into, into, not ensuring, I can't use that word, into ensuring, ensuring a, an environment that reduces the risk, but there ain't never going to not be risk. And we have got to have incredibly careful understanding of what we do if, if, like, say, if, if suddenly there was a spread in Pittsfield, if there was a spread in a nearby town, how are we going to handle that? And then the other issue that's very important is, how do we get our entire community to behave responsibly? And I know that this community is known for its responsible behavior. But as I drove down Spring Street today, I don't know if they were out of towners, but they were not being responsible.
So on that, on that point, is the administration, because it does need to be a community, really a community effort to abide it, abide it, and the, and the virus kind of punishes mistakes severely. So do, is there a conversation with the local boards of health or other institutions to see how we can get this kind of community effort to promote mask-wearing and hygiene and, you know, responsible social interactions at appropriate distance? Because it's not just the school. Everything's going to meet in the school. We're going to be a big nexus, but we're, you know, everybody's going to come bearing, you know, whatever they've picked up in other places in the community.
Yes, I, I met with the town managers and health departments probably two weeks ago, but we were really strategizing on how to, the, the aspect of this issue that you mentioned, because it really is, it has to be a, something that the towns and the schools collaborate with. Every, every institution in our communities should be united in an approach to ensuring this. I have seen examples in other countries that, where there's a very careful understanding of, of communal responsibility. There was an interesting article in the New York Times this morning that actually described why the United States is having the worst, the worst outbreaks of, of, basically, the worst, the most number of cases, the worst outcomes in terms of deaths. And the article, I highly recommend it to anybody who wants to read it, but one of the issues was this sort of a, that in countries that are being very successful, there's a real, a national norm of, of communal thought. And our country has been based, in many cases, on a more independent approach.
So you're talking about meeting with the town managers reminded me of the conversation we had in the finance subcommittee about testing. Can you talk about that a little bit, if there's a plan for testing our students or our faculty?
This is, in meeting with, with, that, that meeting that I had with the town managers and the, and the health departments of both towns, we did discuss a potential strategy of, of some, of some testing, that Jason Hoke said, did I pronounce his name correctly? Jason Hoke said, he said that there are, that there was money in the CARES Act, that he's earmarking for a concept of testing based on the relationship with Williams College, which is with a broad institute, for a test that is accurate on asymptomatic patients, so that this would help us to understand this. We discussed, he discussed the possibility of organizing, basically using some of that testing toward for, that he's earmarking for the community, for the towns. And Joe and I, actually, I should say, because of his limit, the way that the money comes for CARES, it would actually be for Williamstown and Mount Greylock. And Joe and I thought we could potentially use some of our ESAR money to ensure that Lanesboro had the same sort of thing. And we discussed the concept of a random sampling of staff and students. We didn't discuss the idea of testing everybody. We discussed the idea of a random, random sampling model, which in many cases, it could be, depending upon the sample size, can be incredibly accurate. And, but we haven't moved further on that particular idea at this point. I have to point out that, yeah, I mean, that this community, it's wonderful to have the wealth, but I know that there are a number, number of communities, our neighbors, who would never have an opportunity to be able to do these things, and I just, I just point that out only.
Have you talked about doing pooled testing?
Well, yeah, I, I had not talked about that one, I was just reading about that.
Right. So, so what you could do is imagine you have a hundred people and one person is infected. If you put them in a ten-by-ten grid, if you do one test for each row and one test for each column, with twenty tests, if only one person is infected, then only one row, one column comes up. And so if there's a small number of infections, this is a way to very rapidly test a large number of people with fewer tests. And so there's a well-established theory, and a lot of countries which have fought COVID have done stuff like this in massive, massive undertakings.
Well, that's something that I would, I would, I would block direction from the school committee on whether or not to pursue this type of thing. And, yeah, our direction.
Yeah, I mean, I just know that Williams is bringing back students based on our ability to test them.
Right.
Right? And so, we're not, the college is not relying on masks and sanitation and distancing only, where they're really relying on testing and going, being able to isolate. And so, here we are, we, we, Mount Greylock Regional School District, pre-K through twelve, we have a plan, but we don't have testing. And that makes me very nervous about what we're getting into.
Well, one difference is the Williams students are coming back from different environments right now.
And our families might be.
No, I know, I know, but I'm saying, and one thing that's nice is that Williams has just updated their policy to now, it's, I think, two negative tests are needed before students can. to now it's, I think, two negative tests are needed before students can leave the quarantine of when they arrive on campus.
I do, I do feel better about the fact that students are coming in from all over the place. They will be tested twice, they will be quarantined.
Yes.
I feel like it's, it's less risk to the community bringing all those students back.
Yes.
But I don't feel like we, the Mount Greylock Regional School District, have a way to monitor the levels of illness in our community and make decisions about what to do about school based on any kind of data, because we're not collecting any.
Yeah. We also don't have the ability to kind of monitor and enforce kind of norms of behavior outside the class day, which the college as a residential college does. So there's a, there's a, there's a bunch, and I think it speaks to the importance of this, the risk of transmission not just being protected against in the, in the buildings here, but in the broader community. I think, Dr. Putnam, you're exactly right, that it needs to be a community effort to try to address this and normalize protective behavior. And that if, if parents and community members want to have, you know, the school have in-person classes to the greatest extent possible, everybody's got to invest in that in the way that they, or invest towards that in the way they lead their kind of day-to-day life outside their home. Or even inside, if you're talking about social gatherings and stuff like that.
Something interesting is, we're talking with these, with masks on, I'm realizing that I'm going to have to work, we're probably, one of those aspects of teaching the children, we're going to focus on projection and dictation.
Yeah.
I used to do that when I was a music teacher, I would start like one hen, two ducks, three squawking geeks, four limerick oysters. Because it's not easy to understand people with masks on.
But do we also do more eye motion now that you can't see smiles and facial expressions?
Right.
Will our, will our students be signing contracts about behavior and mask-wearing?
That was one of our early, I remember we had something on that, I believe there was something.
That, that is a part of the proposal that you'll end up seeing in detail next, next week. And part of what the state's doing right now is it's trying to figure out to what extent you legally can and cannot do and enforce some of those things. And that is an area where we're still trying to figure out what is appropriate and what is legally appropriate.
And, and just as an example, when you guys got on the bus, I asked each one of you, did you have, did you have a fever today? Did you have any, were you coughing? Did you have symptoms? And that type of information is going to be collected from the adults in the house prior to the kids, the children getting on the bus. And then when the students are out arrayed in order to come into the building, we're gonna go over and make sure that we've had that report. Now it sounds, I know that kind of sounds like, wow, let's, you know, but it's part of the thing of, we're a community. Make sure that if your child is ill or demonstrating any symptoms that could be COVID, you must keep them home. And I think that is one of those difficult aspects that we, that everybody's going to have to think as a community and say to themselves, I'm a part of this. I'm going to play my part in ensuring that the whole is kept safe.
So I have three more questions, and you know, again, building on what you just said. As I said at the education committee meeting, this is an all-hands-on-deck moment. You know, we have a tremendous wealth of resources in this community. Let us know what we can do to help. And I am sure that there will be large number of volunteers stepping forward. So I have three questions. The first, is there any concern about students in seven to nine or ten through twelve having potentially five days in a row without being in the building? I know, I know, a Monday, Thursday, you know, Tuesday, Friday would be better, but then that, in terms of cleaning, you lose the ability of keeping the groups separate.
I'm gonna have to ask that we consider that. In other words, splitting seven through nine, that would be an A-B, A-B.
Right.
Yeah, okay, let me, let me talk to them.
Okay, thanks.
I hadn't thought about that.
Okay. The next one was, could you say a little bit more on hybrid instruction? So would the teachers be giving the same lectures on, say, the A-days as they would on the B-days? Or would you do all different lectures and some days you would be there in person? Some days you would be listening remote either synchronously if able to, or asynchronously if not?
That, if I remember correctly, we're not exactly, part of the issue that we're talking about here, or part of the challenge that we've got, is that I have a group of dedicated volunteers for the instructional committee. And they are thinking through things, and actually they have been responding wonderfully to my requests for changes. But at the same time, they are completely aware that we have not thought this way before. And it's going, like the thing you're describing, that's the heavy lift that we're looking at for the start of the school year.
Right.
So right now, we've been given ten days by the commissioner to start to work on these things. The question is, can we get to the point you're describing? I think what you're saying is really an important consideration, is that learning, it would be best if there were, if kids had one experience in the classroom and their remote experience was something that was separate. Now, some of the thinking of the instructional committee is that their core subject will be in the classroom, and perhaps music, art, and other things, those would be their multiple.
But with potentially an extended period of time so that you have less.
Exactly. So, but right now, the nitty-gritty of this is gonna require all of the teachers in one place to discuss, so how do we do this? And that's the interesting challenge is, and the real issue that comes up with, with actually the instructional committee is, how do you re, how do you actually, how do you reorganize how teaching is done? And first off, you need everybody there. And number two, you need time.
Right.
So that right now, if we look at this, we're asking kids to do something, you know, basically it's four days, two, you know, basically everybody's in school, but then we still need time to figure out how to do this. That's one of the reasons that the instructional committee was, was talking about the idea of starting with remote in order to give more, more time for the design and planning. Because the analogy I often think is helpful in here is, we are, once the school year starts, we are redesigning and rebuilding the plane while it's flying. And I think that that's the issue that we've caught. And it's just the nature of the organization of school, that, you know, essentially we're in a job, we're in, our task is done with students with us the entire time. So I just, I think, in answer to your question, that is, the heavy lift is what's gonna be happening on the first ten days of school, and then trying to figure out how best to make that happen. I wish I could be more specific.
No, no, it's a, it's a good image, very similar to the Yorktown being repaired on the way to the Battle of Midway. Is that there wasn't time to let it sit in Pearl Harbor. It was needed, you fix it as it goes. The last question I had, and again, thank you for all the work on this, is to just reiterate that in none of these plans is any student going to be forced to come back if they or their family feel uncomfortable about coming back. That all students will always have the ability to have, you know, remote experience, and that we are not going to do anything that would compromise their education, and that we are always thinking about what can we do for all students remembering, and faculty remembering their needs.
And what you're describing right now is also a tremendous challenge in terms of logistics.
Right.
Because as we're experiencing here, our members been over on that, our member, I kind of wanted to picture her behind that.
Ally's there.
Ally is there?
Okay.
Ally, are you still there?
I'm here, yes.
But the district is also considering what resources would be necessary for those who are staying home. And does that include people who choose to pull their kids from the school district and homeschool? Or is that a different?
No, totally different thing.
Totally different.
That's what happens when you choose to homeschool, that is your, that becomes a responsibility of a parent, and the parent must, in order to be approved, submit a plan to the superintendent for consideration, and the superintendent approves or does not approve a homeschooling plan.
Okay. Thank you.
Shall I continue, or?
Yep.
Okay then. So I wanted to just quickly go over some of these other things. Although I didn't have it in here, on my, on my table of contents, I had put in this idea that what I'd like to do is to think about benchmarks for going, for moving to in-person from hybrid model. And I've yet to figure exactly how to do that, but that's, that's one of the ideas, is that if we are, we are given, like either, you know, basically if things improve, or if our conditions remain as they currently are, how would we move between hybrid to a fully in-person? And I've yet to think that one through entirely to determine what sort of benchmarks we could be able to consider as we went there. But when we go to the in-person model, essentially the things we're looking at, we're gonna have designated locations and times for entrance and exits, much the same things that we've been describing in regard to hybrid learning have to happen. But they are further complicated by the fact of larger numbers of students. So instead of, I'll use Lanesboro Elementary as an example, instead of having a hundred students in there at a time, you're gonna have two hundred students at a time, which requires a whole bunch of different things. Because as you can see, all the things that are up on that board, how do you make that happen when you have that many kids in a row? It's, it's, it's difficult enough to do this. For example, I had, I had basically told you that when you came in here, we would have to determine what were the criteria, or not criteria, but what was the protocol for leaving this place to go to the restroom? And as you can imagine, the facilities guidance we've received is that every time a restroom is used, it's gotta get cleaned. So if you have a hundred students in a building, that gives you one set of challenges, but you double that number, we're gonna have to figure out how to pull that one off. And so there's also, there's just a lot of things, if we go to a full in-person, that complicate the issue tremendously. Remote, full-remote, basically the, the instructional group, and I think the thinking is, is that we could actually offer the same sort of diversity that we've got if people are here, but unfortunately, we run the risk of all the problems that were mentioned in that protocol. And the parts that were mentioned in some of the comments that were read today, is, is that people need to be with other people. And that's, I mean, we are, yeah, we're kind of, we're a group. We started at all of the savannas of Africa in groups, family, family groups. And we've been doing that for as long as we've been around. And I think that that's, we need to be, we need to feel a part of something, and remote is not a good way of doing that. There are, that's, there are some who can handle it, and there are other people who that's a very debilitating circumstance for them to have to endure. But the idea is that if we do full-remote, we have the diversity of courses, and we, of course, would open learning centers so that students could come and take advantage of the things that are here. So, that's what I got. And I think the best part is that I'm coming, I was so happy for a delay in the requirement for submission, because I was thinking of, of some of the different Kira Kurosawa movies that I've seen, and I thought it, at this point, is typically in the movie where I offered to commit seppuku, because I have failed, I have failed. Or become Ronin or something, I'm sorry. But in this particular case, I have a little more opportunity to, I have tomorrow in the weekend to work on this plan and to flesh it out, and hopefully bring it to a greater stage of clarity so that you folks can make a vote on it.
Thank you. Do you want to add something?
No, I just wanted to add, before you fall on a sword, that, you know, as we've said numerous times, you know, this is going to be a long process, it's a difficult process. I think it's amazing how much we've progressed in such a short time, how much the plan is evolving. And that when people have raised concerns, we have been able to discuss them rationally, we've been able to think about them, saying, you know, we hadn't thought about that. Let's go back, let's check, let's see what can we do? And that we've gone from, you know, having debates about three feet versus six feet, to now we can actually do six feet. And so we're in a very different place than we were. We now have ten through twelve back, you know, twice a week. And so I'm, I'm very happy with the progress we're making. This doesn't mean I'm not gonna continue to constantly ask, and I encourage other people to constantly ask. But I think, I think this is wonderful, the discussions we've been having.
Thank you. And I do believe that, I think that this is an iterative process. And I think that the real iterative process is what we have once we get started. Because then we're going to know what's working, what's not working, and we'll have to adjust on the fly. And I, you know, I really look forward to working with the staff, because I know that this is a very creative group of people. And as they, it's going to be good for us to have these, the scheduling, where we have opportunities to reflect on what is happening at each of the buildings and how we can improve it as we go.
Well, this is why I've asked in previous meetings, is it possible to bring each grade back twice, once each week, as part of the ten days of professional development, just to do trial runs and just to get a sense of what is it like as students start moving through the buildings, to have teachers get a sense of how do they run their classrooms now?
Yeah, I look forward to, as I said, I begin discussions with the Magia next Tuesday, and I look forward to discussing all of these aspects and getting their perspective and finding out, you know, coming, just as we're doing here, as the community's been doing with us. This is a conversation between multiple groups. And the one thing that I, that I believe is, I believe to be true, is that we all want the same thing. We want what's best for the kids. And if that is, if that's the shared belief, then we will be able to come to agreements that could, that'll achieve that. Might mean some difference in times and things like that, but let's see where we go.
Thank you very much. Anybody have anything else?
Great. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is principal updates. So I look great.
Okay, I have the principal updates right here. I actually love, I love the competitive, the competitive spirit among these principals. It's very good, they're all, all of them, all of them are willing to. So I'm gonna start with, I'm gonna, just in the comment, I'm gonna start with the first one I got. So here we go. I gotta make sure I have the first one here. Actually, no, let me go back to that. Jake, here we go. So, I'm reading as Jake. "Good afternoon, Mount Greylock is being cleaned and looks beautiful, inside and out, as good as new. I'm excited to announce that all faculty positions are filled, while only a few staff positions remain in the interview phase. I hope to have all positions filled within the next week and a half. I'm pleased with the quality of feedback I've received from our community about reopening. I'm, I bring this information with me into every planning meeting or discussion. I look forward to being part of our collective team that develops the way forward. I'm specifically impressed by the input of the Greylock, Mount Greylock students and staff. I take both your individual and collective insight, ideas, and thoughtfulness as a sign that despite what school looks like in September, great teaching will happen, great teaching and learning will happen. To wrap up, I'd like to mention three times in places where people can collaborate, collaborate with building administration. Fridays at noon, I host office hours for faculty and staff. Saturdays, Saturdays at nine, I host a coffee hour for parents. And starting this week, Mr. Shebar, who is the assistant principal, with some, with some meeting staff will begin, or with some Mount Greylock staff, will begin hosting student check-ins. All respective parties should have received the Zoom invites via email. If I missed you, please call the main office for details at 458-958-EXTENSION-1000. Talk to you soon, Jake." And now, the competition continues. I'm gonna start with Kristin's. "As with the other schools, not much has changed at West either, and the summer clutter in the hallways is beginning to clear as the beginning of school nears. Classrooms are being outfitted for a possible hybrid return. I've been answering numerous emails from families regarding the procedures they will follow in order to opt out of, or of any form of in-person learning and get their..." in order to opt out of, or of any form of in-person learning and get their children signed up for remote learning, as well as staff that have expressed concerns about returning. Without a concrete plan, I have expressed that information will be available to them in the coming weeks. We are eager to begin planning what the year will bring. We are drafting plans for the year in the form of class lists, entrance and exits, et cetera. We are gearing up to get learning started again." And now, finally, last but not least, from Lanesboro's Nolan Pratt. "Not much has changed in Lanesboro since the last school committee meeting. We're wrapping up hiring a new general education teacher by the end of the day on Monday, and hiring a new music teacher by the end of next week. Small projects are being accomplished. Gardens are being cleaned out and walls are being painted. We have worked closely with the social workers and school psychologists across the district to address students' mental health needs, either virtually or in person. More administratively scheduled, and the class lists are in draft form and will be completed promptly once the direction of the school year is determined. We are excited to get moving in whichever direction it is." And those are the principal reports.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the chair report. The only thing I have is, in your packet was Jonathan Knopper's resignation as the minutes recorder. If we don't have a minutes recorder, that typically falls to Jamie. However, they just found somebody too that is willing to step in and hopefully that will be put in place tomorrow.
Nice.
Just to record minutes or someone?
Dodge the bullet, Jamie.
What's that?
You dodged the bullet.
Well, yeah.
So we'll have more on that probably in the next, the next meeting. Okay, and then, so the next agenda item is the subcommittee and liaison reports. And I'm going to turn policy over to you, Carrie.
Okeydoke. So after asking about masks, I do recall there is a new mask policy from MASC that will come to us at our next school committee meeting. So we'll have an opportunity to talk about that at that point. There is a, so we're going to do a second read of the BEDHR, Remote Public Comment Policy, and the ACAB, Anti-Discrimination, Anti-Harassment and Grievance Procedure. We're going to do a first read of EBC, which is a supplemental emergency. What is it called? One second. Well, it's not coming up right now. But, but we also have a revision to that that we can consider, which is in your packet. It was used by another school committee. It is basically the same thing. It's the emergency plan interim policy for COVID-19 related issues. So we'll talk about that after we do the second read. So I think you've all had a chance to see that the remote public comment, I did run the revisions that we discussed at the last meeting. Specifically, we eliminated number nine. And in number eight, we added the phrase, typically the school committee does not respond to public comments. Legal counsel was fine with both of those. The question that I have for the committee is how you want people to submit public comment. Right now, we have it going to the chair or to the chair and the superintendent. Previously, we had it going to the school committee email. So I think we just need to be consistent. It seems to change according, you know, on various agendas, it says different things. So what does the committee want to do in terms of the public? This is specifically guidelines for remote meetings. You know, this is also specifically for people who want to write their comments. And we also still have that they can attend by chat if we're Zoom, or they can call in, be recognized for, as a speaker. So this is specifically, do you want them to write to the school committee, to the chair, or to the chair and the superintendent? Opinion?
So, for me, I want it to be at least two people. It's always, you know, to me concerning if only one person is getting it, because then if something happens and they're not able to make a meeting, something might fall through the cracks. You know, for that reason, as well as it's valuable for us as a committee to hear what the public is saying, I would probably say send it to the school committee and the superintendent.
Is there a reason we switched to having it go to the chair? I don't know. Rob, do you have any experience with difficulties of public comment prior to meetings, going to the whole school committee and the superintendent as opposed to the chair and the superintendent?
Certainly. So in other words, a complaint coming through?
No, public comment for a meeting. This is the remote policy, the guidelines for public, for remote meeting, public comment.
I have, unfortunately, all of my experience was prior to any sort of thing remote. Two years ago, I retired. The only thing we were doing at those time was allowing people to actually join a meeting remotely. It was novel, that night.
I'm happy for, to go to the, it seems like the school committee.
Yeah, I mean, any public comment is going to end up in the packet anyway. So it's, it actually eliminates one step for me from getting that public comment and making sure it goes out.
So the school committee email and the superintendent? Okay. So do we want to move it, approve it with, based on that revision?
I'll still move.
Do we need to actually read it? Can we wait?
Not on the second read, I think.
It was pointed out to me that because Ally is remotely, we do have to do roll call votes.
Okay.
So we'll probably have to go, and there's actually an issue with our minutes motion. So I don't know how exactly we handle that, but I don't know if we fix that motion in our next meeting, because we have to fix it anyway. But just going forward, when we vote.
Is Ally still there?
Ally's still there.
I, I would say, why don't we just revote it?
We can just revote it now to fix it.
Okay. So.
Want to do that first?
Do you want to do that first?
Let me, let me get into that.
Are you there, Ally?
We'll assume that that was not Ally.
So that, so Jamie, the one problem is that July 9th minutes weren't in our packet. So.
Okay.
We're not approving July 9th. And that we have to do a roll call vote.
Okay, let me just pull, I'm going to delete. So do we need to move to?
So I can read, I can do the motion all over again if that's.
Sure.
Okay. So do I have a motion to approve the following minutes? July 6th, 2020, July 13th, 2020, July 17th, 2020, July 24th, 2020, July 29th, 2020, July 30th, 2020, July 31st, 2020, and July 31st, 2020 at 2:30 PM?
I think I moved last time. Is that right, Jamie?
Yes, you moved, and I'll second move.
Okay, Miller moves, Terranova seconds. Any discussion? We'll roll call alphabetically.
Art, aye.
Conry, aye.
Green, aye.
Miller, aye.
Terranova, aye.
Okay, that motion passes. Thank you.
And then, right, so the other one was not effective. So we don't need to worry about deleting the approval of the July 9th minutes. So, okay.
Okay, so now we're at the guidelines for remote meeting, public comment, BEDH-R. This is the second read. We were going to have somebody move them with the revision as discussed.
I was, I'm happy to move them with the revision.
Okay, Miller moves.
All second.
Green, second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Roll call alphabetically.
Art, aye.
Carter, aye. Conry, aye.
Green, aye.
Miller, aye.
Terranova, aye.
Policy passes. Thank you.
All right, so then the next one is the ACAB, Anti-Discrimination, Anti-Harassment and Grievance Procedure. The committee asked me to check with council to see if there had been any feedback from other school committees. And the response was that no, they hadn't heard of any changes to the policy. And there isn't a lot of flexibility here in any case. It's just something that we're coming into compliance with legislation and we need to get it in our books. So I don't have anything more to report if you guys want to move it. Or I can move it. Policy ACAB, I can move.
I'll move it just to make it easier for Jamie. It's the same order.
Okay.
Miller moves, green, second.
Uh huh.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Roll call alphabetically.
Art, aye.
Carter, aye. Conry, aye.
Green, aye.
Miller, aye.
Terranova, aye.
So, policy EBC supplemental. The, the shorter version, the more condensed version, I should say, went into the packet more recently, so you may not have seen it. It's right, it's the second thing in the Google document. And Al, I'm not positive you have it. But it was sent by Fred, and it's a condensed version that Mohawk School System is instituting that was reviewed by their office. So would you like me to read that? It's, it has all the same information. It's just more streamlined and less wordy. Yes?
Yes.
Okay. So this is Emergency Plans, Interim Policy for COVID-19 Related Issues. "The school committee recognizes the many disruptions to all aspects of society caused by the COVID-19 pandemic, and in particular to education. Students, families, and staff were forced to adjust to a rapidly changing set of challenges when schools closed from mid-March until June, and schools needed to switch to remote learning. These challenges continue as the district plans for the new school year. The committee recognizes the concerns of students and families, the need to ensure the health and safety of students and staff, the disruption of the traditional school day and year, the challenges of lack of adequate internet access for many of our students and teachers, the uncertainty of funding, and the growing number of issues that will affect public, public education. Therefore, the school committee establishes an emergency interim policy two, and these are bullet points. One, promote public safety and the health and safety of students and faculty. Two, maintain to the extent possible the high and efficient level of educational services. Three, ensure support for students in general, and in particular for those at highest, highest risk educationally, as well as those at social and emotional risk. And four, comply with the emergency orders of the governor and adhere to the extent possible to the guidance of the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and other agencies of state and federal government, and expedite the safest strategy for returning students to school. The school committee will approve the final plan submitted to DESE, which will outline the district's strategy for returning students to school. And the committee will, in collaboration with the superintendent, make such modifications to the back-to-school plan and district policies as may become necessary. The school committee will also authorize the superintendent to suspend, revise, or create protocols to facilitate implementation of the plan and ultimately the safe return to school. The superintendent will designate the appropriate staff members to oversee the safe administration of COVID-related policies during the period of the pandemic emergency and shall make such recommendations to the school committee as needed. The school committee will authorize the superintendent to act expeditiously in executing the back-to-school plan in accordance with current laws and regulations and will, where noted, authorize the superintendent to suspend, revise, or recommend policies, rules, and protocols as needed to serve the best interests and safety of students, their families, and the community. The back-to-school plan shall constitute the policy of the school district during the pandemic emergency. And the superintendent shall exercise the authority provided in law to carry out the plan as needed. The superintendent, with the advice and consent of the school committee, may suspend or modify individual district policies to address the COVID emergency as declared by the governor. Such suspension of policy shall expire upon the end of the emergency as declared by the governor. The goal of emergency pandemic policy shall be to, one, ensure the safety and health of students, faculty, staff, and all persons who may come in contact with them; two, provide the most effective educational services as possible to students under the circumstances; three, authorize changes to operating protocols as needed in order to operate schools effectively from various venues or platforms; four, conduct the district business and operational functions of the district as efficiently as possible; five, allow the superintendent and staff to act quickly to carry out back, a back-to-school plan; and six, facilitate the re-establishment of a safe and productive school day and year. Subject to guidance from DESI, state and federal laws, and the provisions of collective bargaining agreements were applicable, the back-to-school plan may address, and the superintendent may need to make changes that affect, and this is a list. School calendar, time on learning, student assignments to schools, class size, attendance, transportation and busing, pivoting between in-school and remote learning based on COVID-19, homeschooling, as well as families opting for remote learning for health reasons, grading and retention, graduation requirements, discipline and suspension, job descriptions, attendance and participation in extracurricular activities, visitors to school buildings, illness and contact tracing, operations and facilities maintenance. As such, the school committee grants authority to the superintendent to supersede or revise the policies relating to the above-listed topics for the duration of time in which the emergency declaration relating to COVID-19 is in effect or upon revision of this policy by the school committee. In all cases, the privacy and rights of students shall be upheld. Any changes that need to be made due to COVID-19 pandemic shall be communicated in a timely fashion."
Thank you for reading that.
Yeah. And I believe Rob was able to, excuse me, interim superintendent Putnam was able to go over these with some of the staff and some of the working groups. And the specific concern that came up was around visitors and participation in team meetings. And that visit, and the ability to restrict visitors is part of the original. Let me just see what they wrote. So in the original one that we all got, the EBC supplemental, that is covered in visitors in schools and buildings, K.I. So the, the original one references every policy that is affected. And all of those policies are basically, they've, those are the bullet points in the list that I just read. "Subject to current emergency declarations, the superintendent may propose suspension or modification to district policies regarding visitors to school buildings during the school day and others, and after-school hours." So that is covered there and therefore would also be covered by the policy as I read it.
And what we, what we would do is to ensure that
And what we would do is to ensure that in cases that are involving special education, that we would offer alternative virtual methods of being able to do this.
Questions? It's pretty comprehensive.
MASC takes their policy very seriously.
And we could put this on the agenda at the next meeting for a second read if we wanted to have it in place for the...
And we will have a meeting next week, so this is good.
Yeah, yeah.
That's all I have. Okay, so Jamie, turning it over to you.
Yes, we, the Finance Sub-
We could vote on it next time.
Because it's a first read.
We could read it again. So the Finance Subcommittee met last week, and we approved the regular warrants, nothing unusual in them, and we also had an initial discussion about unbudgeted costs related to COVID, and as Joe mentioned today, that, you know, a lot of those numbers are still being worked on. We do have about $362,000 of grant money tied to CARES Act and the ESER funds.
Tied to ESER through CARES, and then the coronavirus relief fund from the state.
So, and then also, we all got the update from the state in the last week or so, that it looks like our state money will be, come in where it was originally estimated, so there won't be any cuts there, so, oh.
It's important to note that that only applies to Chapter 70.
Okay, so that's Chapter 70.
Transportation, regional transportation, as well as some of the other buckets of money that are important, are not determined yet, so we don't know.
So that's all, that's all we got.
Okay, thank you. Stephen, Education.
So what's nice is-
Can I just ask, will there be another discussion about costs of reopening at the next meeting, or will it be the meeting after that?
The next meeting will be the right, once we feel like we're pretty stable with our hybrid plan approach, that will allow us to get much more specific in terms of potential costs.
Probably not next week.
Right, but we need to do, have another Finance Committee meeting next week for warrant stuff, so I don't know if we want to just put that on the agenda in case you have any preliminary information at that point.
I would love to.
Okay.
Stephen, back to you.
Okay, so what's nice is, you know, going so late in the meeting, the Education Subcommittee report is going to be short, because a lot of the concerns and issues and questions raised by the community was actually addressed by Dr. Putnam and his team. And so what I will just say is that, you know, when we have these meetings, it's open to everyone in the public, we encourage everyone to come, we encourage participation throughout. We've had a lot of very difficult discussions on challenging topics, you know, trying to balance the safety issues and the emotional, social, and educational issues of our children. We've had a lot of really good public comments, you know, one of them that I do want to highlight was from Dr. Ott, who is one of the two school physicians from Mount Hurleylock, about balancing the mental health issues of our children with the attempt to, you know, provide various levels of safety. And that, you know, we are constantly thinking about both of these issues and trying to do what we can on all fronts. And that's why, you know, a lot of times there are going to be things that come up that just haven't been thought of, and that's why I just want to constantly reiterate to people, if you have a suggestion, please bring it forward. So that's it for Education.
Great, thank you. Okay, do I have a motion to move into executive session with intent to return to open session per MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions and preparation for contract negotiations with non-union personnel of the new superintendent, per MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel of the new superintendent?
So move.
Second.
Green moves, Miller seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, roll call, vote please, alphabetically.
Art, I.
Carter, I.
Conroy, I.
Green, I.
Miller, I.
Turnover, I.
Okay, we are going to move into executive session. It is 5:58 PM. Okay, we are going to move into executive session. It is 5:58 PM.